Test.
I haven't been to Kingsburg in a while. It's been awhile. So, wanted to come and just kind of give an update.
Welcome. Tonight is the regular city council meeting for Wednesday, July 16th, 2025. Call this meeting into order and we can get a roll call, please.
President?
Here.
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 First is to approve tonight's agenda. We'll entertain motions.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, under presentations and informational reports, we have none listed, so we will move on to public comment. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest to the public within the council's jurisdiction, which are not already on the agenda for this evening. It is the policy of the council not to answer these questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than three minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council as each item is brought up for discussion. With public comment being open, do we have any members of the public that would like to come up and speak to something that is not currently on the agenda? Come on up if you can. Just, we ask everyone to state their name for the record and whether or not you're a resident of Kingsburg.
Roxanne Serna, District Representative for Senator Melissa Hurtado, not a resident. Today, I just wanted to come up. I haven't been to Kingsburg in awhile. It's been awhile. So, wanted to come and just kind of give an update. The legislative package that Senator Hurtado started out with was 22 bills. And of the 22, 12 of them have passed the senate floor and are on the assembly floor right now. And appropriations and seeing if they get approved. So, hopefully, fingers crossed, we're hoping that the 12 of the bills that did get passed through the senate floor will pass through the assembly floor. Summer recess will begin at the end of session pending passage of the budget. I am hosting a senior scam presentation at the Belkman Village Mobile Home Park on Thursday, July 24th from 9:30 to 11:30. If you guys are available, I'd encourage you guys to come out. I will be presenting some information. The Department of Financial Protection Innovation, and it's a catalog. It's a book brochure. In the back of it, it has a lot of resources for our seniors. Contacts and information provided to them. Also attended the farmer's market last week. It was a very good event. I wasn't able to stay for the band in the park. I also attended a ribbon cutting for Kingsburg Family Dentistry. I had three ribbon cuttings that day, so I had to leave the certificate, but it was a good turnout. Also have connected in regards to the date for the pushing ceremony for the ladder truck for the fire department. I've reached out to Chief Roberts, and so looking forward to that date. I think we're settled on sometime in October, just having concrete to the date yet. So, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you for coming on. When does summer session start for Senator?
I believe it's tomorrow. Yes, I believe it is tomorrow. If I'm not mistaken, it is tomorrow, but pending the budget. Yeah.
Thank you.
Told not to get early flights out, so we'll see how that works out tomorrow.
Thank you, Roxanne. Other members of the public like to come up? They see none, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and include a recommendation from staff and shall be acted upon in one motion of the council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive the full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For tonight, we have consent items one through six. Would any council members like to pull an item? Any members from staff or any members from the public like to pull anything from our consent counter? Okay, seeing none, we will entertain motions for the consent calendar.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That calendar passes. Thank you. Next, we will move on to our regular calendar. Item number seven, that is the City of Kingsburg Housing Element Update Staff Report Prepared by Community Development Director Holly Owens.
Good evening, Mayor Purcell, City Council. Holly Owen, Community Development Director. Tonight, we're here to review and summarize the status of the housing element update process as we know it now. There's a little history. The city participated in the multi-jurisdictional housing element. It was a 13-city, Central Valley cities coordinated by Fresno Cog to complete their respective housing elements. This was in 2022. It is an eight-year mandated policy, so the clock starts and then you are done, more or less, for another seven years. It is really meant to identify current and projected housing needs, show location where housing can be built, and set the goals and policies that would put those in place. And every city's required housing element has policies and programs, and every year we're required to at least report on the progress of attaining the goals of those programs. Just for prior actions, more into the near past, on December 4th of 2024, the council adopted the relevant tax zone amendments that the housing element was requiring of us. But after consideration and public comment, council chose to not adopt the housing overlay zones that were required. Subsequently, council directed staff to work with HCD to examine alternative options to meet the regional housing allocation without the upzoning of the four locations. Since that time, there's been a continued communication with housing and community development. That's the entity in Sacramento that we deal with that represents the state, and our housing element consultants and our own staff to craft alternative options to the housing element requirements that would satisfy the community while meeting the requirements of HCD for completing housing element. A virtual meeting was held on May 23rd with the Purple and Pritchard Consultants with city staff and Paul McDougall, who's manager of housing policy at HCD. During that meeting was confirmed that we could continue with our resubmit as proposed. There was a lot of data in the previous housing element submittal that, you know, we weren't sure whether we didn't update that continually or whether we could move ahead with what remained there, and that was confirmed that we could do that. So, over the next several weeks, we posted the housing element on the website as per requirements. We sent the proposed housing element to over 100 stakeholders that were involved in the original housing element process. No comments were received within the seven-day public noticing period, and subsequently, we sent the amended housing element on June 26th, 2025 for their review. In a response from HCD dated July 2nd, they acknowledged our submittal, and they said that a quote "final findings" response letter would be delivered by August 25th, 2025. So, they have a certain time period to review and respond, and we are hopeful that they will accept it. With a couple of consultants, we put together that best possible scenario for Kingsburg, and the decision really is in the hands of HCD. This concludes my staff report. Attached is a copy of our letter to HCD for the 26th and the accompanying proposed changes that we would like to have considered. There is a pretty voluminous document attached to this item, but you could look on page 94 of your packet. That highlights the elimination of the four parcels that were originally proposed from consideration. It's redlined there. On page 108, there's a mention of the 32 programs that we are required to self-evaluate every year and report back to the state. So, a lot of, you know, a lot of work, a lot of things to keep track of. And then on page 126, there was a correction to a number of units in a proposed senior housing project that has just, they've just resubmitted this week. So, we're hopeful that that will move forward too. So, those are some of the items that needed to be cleaned up and recalculated for our submittal. You have any questions? I'm here to do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments from council?
I have one question. Holly, this manager of the housing, Paul McDougall, was he fairly receptive to our proposal?
He's a fairly big-picture, high-level guy. He has a deep experience with
Now, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wants to speak on this? It's not your time. Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to council. Any final thoughts? Okay, so seeing none, we just file this. Perfect.
Yes, just an informational update. Just keeping you aware of recent action.
Thank you. We move on to item eight, the Crime Statistics Report for the month of April to June 2025. General Police Department Update. Kingsburg Police Department. Welcome, Chief.
Evening, Mayor Purcell, members of the council. Good to see you again. Our overall statistics are pretty good. That's what it was last year. So, I'm pretty happy about that. Two that I really pay attention to. Yeah, the squiggly lines. That one looks like I wash. Yeah, we're the blue line. Last year was the red line. Pay attention to that one. And then the officer versus citizen cooperation bar graph. How are we doing? How many calls are we initiating versus what the citizens are initiating? So, in this quarter, we had 2,952 calls for service. Officers made 76 arrests. We issued 529 case numbers. So, fairly active quarter. Officer Mesa with the, along with the California Department of Public Health, conducted a compliance check at K-Town Smoke Shop. Numerous illegal tobacco products were found in the shop and estimated that about 75% of the inventory was illegal and then therefore seized due to being illegal, not with California law. Detectives assisted the sheriff's office regarding a possible buried body in the 600 block of Sixth Avenue, which is unincorporated Fresno County. Sheriff's Office received information that a body was missing. Person was buried there. After about an hour digging, they did find a body, so that is still under investigation by the sheriff's office. Kingsburg Police Department during this quarter assisted the Fowler Police Department on an active shooter call at Fowler High School. Fowler stated he had, this is a typical swatting situation. Fowler stated he had just arrived at the school, was about to start shooting. Several other allied agencies joined in. They got a very rapid response, very quickly. Each school in Fowler was searched by officers. No threat were found. Investigation revealed that the phone number showed was coming from the Nether. Unfortunately, those things are still occurring. For our part, the car show went great. You know, over 300 cars. We did have the probation act team out there, which we are a participant in, and also magic, which we continue to participate in. So, pleased to see their presence. It was nice of them to assist on that, but nothing police nature occurred during that event. No issues there or any major issues at the Swedish Festival. No outside assistance was requested for that. The sheriff's office could handle our calls for service on Friday afternoon and evening, so we could attend our ceremony, take pictures, all of that. Last 10 years. Kingsburg PD officers attended the Bring Your Kids to Work Day at T-Mobile. So, they invited us out there. I'd been working with some of their staff on response calls for service out over there in cooperation with their security team. So, one of the things that they wanted to do was invite our officers over to participate in one of their community events, and well, specifically one of their employee events. So, their Bring Their Kid to Work Day, we participated. We took some souvenirs, swag, gold cars, things like that, and also met with their security team. We had on May 3rd numerous bicycle riders representing law enforcement united from the East Coast who were riding through the state of California honoring fallen officers. This was This was right adjacent to National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Week. The writers made a stop in Kingsburg to honor fallen officers. They placed a wreath at our memorial. Lenis Shaleen, one of our notable citizens, who's the great grandson of a Kingsburg PD fallen officer, George Boyle, who died in nineteen twenty four. He was present for the ceremony. So that was very nice. The writers made several stops in Fresno County before heading to Tulare County. We had three of our Kingsburg Explorer Scouts in the academy put on by the Tulare Police Department. With a week long training, the course over forty Explorer Scouts from different agencies in Central Valley participate. All three of our explorers did a good job. As was mentioned by the staff, and one of our explorers took away two awards. Best for scenarios and the best overall student. So we really shined at that. Very pleased with our young people. In addition to that, our Kingsburg Police Explorers participated in a explorer competition in Manteca. Just last month, five, five of our explorers participated. There were thirty five explorer teams from throughout the state. We placed third overall in the competition. So that's a big plus for us. And I'd like to recognize and shout out thanks to Sergeant Gagnon, officers Collejo, Ramirez, and Casciano for their supervision, mentorship for our Explorer Scouts. They put in a lot of time and effort and it really showed. Our people shined at both of those events. Four Kingsburg officers participated in the Special Olympics torch run. The officers ran about eight miles to the city of Selma. This year's event raised sixteen hundred ninety five dollars. So a good chunk of money. And that was participated in by Sergeant Carey, Sergeant Gonzalez, officers Guzman and Jimenez. And then Lieutenant Salinas and Lieutenant Stevens and I attended the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute graduation for Sergeant Lee Fourlines. That was in Folsom last month. That's an eight week course. I've mentioned this a few times. So I'm sorry for repeating myself, but it's a, it's a it's an eight month, it's over eight months. It's a week, four days actually. For course, a lot of reading, a lot of writing, a lot of intense introspection in hand. Sergeant Fourlines did a great job at that. And then tomorrow, we will all be attending the Tulare Kings County Basic Academy Graduation Ceremony for Class one sixty one, in which we have a police recruit sponsored in that class. And then she will begin her orientation next week and field training right after that. We're looking forward to getting another officer up into field training and then deployed in about four months. And then we also have another candidate in the hiring pipeline to fill our current vacancy, and we're looking forward to getting him going soon. He actually lives here in Kingsburg, working at another agency currently. So he's in the hiring pipeline and my report.
Thank you, chief. Questions from council?
You have a question, chief? On the body cams and dash cams? Has any, anybody requested any of that footage since we've, you know, had that going on?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. That's probably a good thing, you know. Yeah, crime's low. We like that.
I want to thank you and the officers for all your help with the Swedish festival. I appreciate how many, how many officers we had out there and and that really helps to keep the community feeling safe. And you were tremendous help. It was great working with everyone.
Very kind. I appreciate that. And, you know, that's, that's good for us because that's good community engagement for us. We get to see people, talk with people, interact. It's a special time for us as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to second that, chief. I had quite a few residents come up to me and say that was really great. That act was out there in full force and and just in the community at those events. So thank you. And, and please, the explorers, that's amazing that we, you know, had explorers play so high and such a well attended, well attended event. So give them our thanks as well and keep up the good work, lieutenants. Thank you also. And so appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your kind words.
Yeah, two things. One, looking at the stats, what I love to see is your guys are out there being active. Chase those crooks. When they come into town, immediately let them know that they're in Kingsburg. I love that. I love that nerve that you guys have going. And also thanks to your guys for being out at the Independence Day fireworks thing. They did a great job. It was a great event and everybody felt a lot safer with you guys being there. So thank you.
Much appreciated, sir.
Uh, do we have any members of the public that would like to make any comments regarding chief's report? Saying none. We appreciate you, chief. Pass on our thanks to your guys.
Thank you. I will certainly.
Next item is item number nine, the Draper Street Construction Staff Report by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Mr. Mayor, City Engineer Dave Peters has a presentation, so I'm gonna let him do his presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Amy, Mayor, Councilman Dave Peters, City Engineer. So I want to talk briefly about Draper Street. Give you a little background. So the, the bike lanes were installed as part of the Fresno Cogs Transit Oriented Development Grant that we received. Those grant funds did not include the rehab of the pavement because those funds aren't eligible for that kind of work. They want to direct the funds to facilities that are going to enable non-motorized travel. So that's a striping. That's not necessarily the pavement rehab. So but before doing it, can you go to the next slide please? We, we recognized that the pavement didn't need to be rehabbed. There was a lot of large cracks. In twenty five years, that paid, that street's never been repaved. We like, we, you know, had an overlay on it in the time that I've been here. So there's large cracks, a lot of irregularities in the profile and the crop and the cross slope. And then we just put a water line down the majority of Draper Street last winter to resolve some fire flow issues. So some treatment was definitely needed before putting the bike lanes on. That was going to be funded by local funds. We looked at different strategies. We looked at milling overlay. That's a very expensive process. Why we haven't done it. We looked at Cape Seal, also expensive product process. We did that over on Marion Street. That's a, that's a chip seal with a slurry over it. And then we looked at slurry seal. So considering all those different treatments and the condition of Draper and obligations that we have on other streets throughout the town, we selected the slurry seal option. So there's different types of slurry seal. Type one is a parking lot sealer. So you'll see that in shopping centers. Really not something that you would put on a city street. Not appropriate for that. A type two slurry seal has, has a fine aggregate in it and it's spread at a about a quarter inch thick and is really used for newer streets to prevent them from deteriorating to the point where you have to do something more drastic. But doesn't really do a whole lot in terms of correcting irregularity. So the type three is, is, is the, is the strategy that you do use for correcting those irregularities. It also provides a more durable wear surface so that the, the treatment will last longer. And that's, again, that's the, that's the seal that we selected for this project. Next slide please. Did this treatment on Earl Street a few years ago. It was pretty successful. So we felt like it would be appropriate for Draper as well. Excellent. The work was completed in October twenty twenty four. Surface roughness is something that diminishes over time. And this graphic that you see on the screen is something that, that Kirkland, Washington put together, the city of Kirkland put together. Just showing how the roughness of the pavement varies from a week after application to seven months later, which is about where we're at right now to a year later. So the surface roughness of the street will continue to smooth out even more so than, than it is right now. Surface raveling is the issue that we're having. It's something that's also to be expected with slurry seals. Every slurry seal is going to have surface raveling after application. Typically, you have enhanced street sweeping, more frequent street sweep, street sweeping, which is what we've done to, to pick up those, that raveling. But, you know, by this point, we would expect it to be really not noticeable or insignificant. And that's not really where we're at on some parts of the road. So next slide. So there are some good areas of the, of the road. There's actually a lot of good areas. And you can see from these, these pictures. No, no exposed aggregate. The, the treatment's holding together well. Really, we don't have a problem, you know, in a lot of the areas. Next slide. But there are some areas that we're having excessive raveling. So next slide. There are some possible causes that we've discussed with the contractor. But honestly, our, our, our discussions with them have really been solution oriented since we're still in the next act please. Still in the warranty period of the, of the project. So we met with Don Berry Construction, who's our contractor, who's been a great partner for us over many, many years, over many, very many projects. Terrific company to work with. And whenever we've had a problem and we haven't had many, they've always been very responsive in terms of solving those problems and no different on this project. We met with them and their subcontractor, walked the entire street and recognized that some corrections are needed. And so really, there was a couple of options. One option would be to patch the areas that are raveling consistent with the contract and repair any, any striping that's affected by that patching. And that's really covered within the, the contract. The contractor, I think, recognized that that is going to look like a patch. There are going to be areas that are patched and has offered to go kind of up and above the requirements of the contract and, and apply a type two slurry seal from the edge of the travel lanes to the gutter on both sides of the street along the entire length of Draper Street. So that, that's kind of the application there in the picture that you see. A lot of agencies are starting to go towards this application as they're focusing more on micro paving and micro surfacing versus complete reconstruction, just because they're trying to spread the dollars. So as those technologies are evolving, they're, they're looking at doing more of this where you've got a type three and then they come back with a type two over it. So you get, you get all the benefits of the type three, correcting the surface irregularities, providing the wear course. But then you also get the, the aesthetic value of the type two and the extra life that, that it adds to the, to the, to the project. So they are asking that the city pick up the cost of the restriping just because they feel like they are going so so much above what the contract requires. And, you know, I've discussed this with our, our, our Public Works Director, and we just feel that this is the best option because the return on that investment is, is, is going to exceed the value of, of the striping in terms of the life of the pavement, the aesthetics and, and that sort of investment that we're going to get with, with this sort of treatment. So with that, again, staff is recommending that you direct us to move forward with option two and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Mr. Peters, oh, can you go back to that slide? I'm sorry. Was, that's the last slide. Is that the before and after? So the rough surface is what it looks like now. After the slurry two, it'll be smooth like.
This is the type three. This is the type two. So it's going to be, you know, aesthetically a lot nicer, a lot smoother. And then, like I said, we saw that three on the bottom and then the two on the top is, is going to provide that additional aesthetic value. We won't have any other patching. And then also, I think we'll extend the life of the type three underneath of it too. So.
Okay, I guess, I guess where I'm having maybe a little bit of an issue is, so you're doing from the, basically the parking spots or stalls. Is that correct?
Yeah, from, from the edge of the travel. And so it includes the bike lane.
Okay.
And all the parking stalls. So that's where the ravelings occurring. There's no raveling occurring in the, in the travel lanes or in the intersections.
Okay.
So and we're seeing, you know, we're seeing those, those are holding up pretty well. You know, and, and again, those will continue to smooth out for that, for that graphic thing.
Okay, so as I walked in, I did go out in the street and just to take a quick look at the actual lanes. And so I noticed when cars reverse and then they turn their wheels, sometimes you can get like a little, a little circle right there where the actual pivot point. Will that clean up in the actual lanes over time also? Or is?
Yeah. So, so slurry seals typically, when they're newer, you know, you do get, and you see this everywhere, parking lots and all, all different kinds of slurry seals. When the wheels turn, you will see, you know, when they're, when they're new, when they're fresher.
Right.
You will see some, some, you know, disturbance. And typically they'll self heal. Just with more traffic over it, they'll heal over time. The issue that we're having is the raveling, so the aggregate coming out. That's, that's the issue that we're having.
Okay.
But yeah, I think the type two will solve that issue.
Okay.
And the contractor does as well.
So the, the proposal is that they'll pick up the slurry seal and then the city needs to pick up the striping.
Correct.
Okay. I, I think they should probably pick up the striping as well because just my own personal opinion, if I, you know, have someone come in and put an irrigation system and then I plant trees right over the top of it and the irrigation system explodes and all my trees are damaged and I have to buy new ones, that's not my fault. That shouldn't be the city's fault.
Right. And, and we can't ask them to go do repairs under the contract. It's just going to, you know, it's going to be an issue where you're going to have the patching. Because there are some areas that are good and don't, don't require repair. So like I said, I think the reason, you know, and we did discuss, we asked them, hey, would you be willing to even go further and do the striping? And they just said that was, that was kind of more than what they, they could absorb.
Right.
So, but you know, the, the option for the patching, you know, would prevent that cost. But like I said, we, we feel that that this is a betterment over the original application of the slurry. So this is going to be a better product than we would have gotten if it was the best type three slurry that had ever been laid. And it's, and it's worth that extra, extra money because we wouldn't have been able to do this treatment for a fraction, you know, or, or, you know, it's a, the cost of the striping is a fraction of order with the cost to actually do this during construction.
Okay, so when Barry got the award of this project, the next closest bid was how, how, how many dollars away?
I don't have that right on my hand, but it was, it wasn't that far off, I don't think. Huh? Don't have that deal.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any of that.
I don't know. I don't have that summary information. But I, I don't believe there was a huge spread. No.
Was it thirty eight thousand dollars different? Was it lower by thirty eight thousand? Okay. Do you feel that, another, another question, I'm, Amy pointed questions at you, but
No, that's fine.
Do you feel that we should have went with a better option at the onset and this wouldn't have happened? Or this is just one of those anomalies that they?
You mean in terms of a different surface treatment?
Yes.
Preference would have been to repave, but you know, that would have absorbed so much of our street funds over, over multiple fiscal years.
Right.
You know, it's, and like I said, many agencies are going to this sort of treatment because you can't afford to repave every road that needs to be repaid. So I mean, this was, I think this was an appropriate treatment. We just have this issue with the raveling.
It's a quicker option also, right?
Dave, if I can, I, I can jump in here because, I mean, I think there was a, a fair amount of discussion to the engineer and Daniel, Public Works Director on this. So I mean, I think if we had our druthers for sure, we would repave all of these streets. I think the challenge with Draper is, and it cuts both ways, obviously, because, you know, the re, I think if frankly, if this is another street, I'm not sure we're having this, this, this discussion, but it is Draper. So if we could go back, you know, with hindsight and maybe say, okay, maybe we should have repaved it because, you know, we're here where we're at right now. But the bigger challenge with Draper is, and it's a long, I mean, Draper's a long stretch of road. And so, you know, if you go out there, you know, Don Berry right now is doing reconstruction on other city streets and they're doing a very good job and they're working quickly. But the challenges with traffic control and the impacts on businesses that a, you know, full reconstruction and how long it would have taken and the impact to them was part of the thought process in, you know, why we decided to go with this. I mean, you know, this was, it was really close for a day. We end up, you know, doing, you know, something similar here to option two, it'll probably be, you know, two days or a little longer. You know, although, although traffic would remain open. And so I think all those things combined, you know, there's, there's so much more traffic on Draper Street every single day than there is. You know, on, on, not all of our streets, but you know, a lot of our like residential streets where you're really just impacting. You know, on on not all our streets, but you know, a lot of our like residential streets where you're really just impacting, you know, the residents that are there and that impacting businesses and people that are traveling, you know, just through Draper. And I think all those factors, along with cost, obviously, cost is certainly a a big portion of it, went into it. And as Dave pointed out earlier, you know, we had good success on Earl Street. So I think we thought, you know, this is the the best compromise at the time for extending the life of the pavement and then, you know, getting getting, you know, the best bang for our buck.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. And I feel that, you know, council felt that way at the time, too, you know, repaving the whole street was going to shut the street down for a longer period of time and costs and absorb an amount of money. So I I appreciate that. And I know that Berry Construction has done several projects, right, prior to me being on the dais and and ones that I voted for like this one. And so I know they they do good work and I'm not at all trying to insinuate that they have been done a good job here. I'm just I'm just not excited about taxpayer dollars being spent to redo something that probably should have been done, you know, right? The first time it was what we would hope, right? But here we are. And so now we're faced with try to do it right again and and spend some taxpayer dollars or, you know, patch it, which I personally, I'm not a fan of patching. I I think that it's not going to look good and Draper is our marquee street. Well traveled, it's well seen by many visitors and and residents alike. And so it's it's gotta be top notch, right? And so that's the the patch job really doesn't seem like an option for me, option one. So I just wish that the maybe, you know, they at at a minimum, they could have split the cost or picked up the striping. That's just my own personal opinion. So thank you for all the work that you've done on it.
You have a question? They the raveling now. You said that it was a, it wasn't Don Berry, it was a subcontractor?
Correct.
Okay. So do you think the raveling was it's happening because of the way was the mix, the way it was applied? Or do they do they know? Do they have any idea?
Like I say, there's a lot of factors that go into these slurry seals. So, I mean, we have spent 99% of our time talking about solutions and how to how to get this corrected before the warranty period's over. You know, we'll do a full postmortem after this to try to, you know, figure out you know, what went wrong to so we can prevent it from happening on future projects. But yeah, there's a lot of variables that go that go into it.
So is this the same procedure as you said on Earl Street? So was it Don Berry or that same subcontractor that did Earl Street, you know?
Don't I don't recall.
Okay, so there'll be another warranty right on this next job, on what they're going to do now?
Yeah, so we're still, yeah, we're still within the warranty period. So I think the warranty is another four months or so. So we, I mean, we'll know the well before the warranty periods whether this is.
Yeah, but I'm saying once they do the work.
It doesn't it does not restart the one year warranty, if that's your question.
So after the patch job, the warranty just stays as it is?
But like I said, by the by the time the one year warranty is up, we'll we'll know definitively whether the
What's the projected start date?
So, yeah, so the contractor is has tentatively scheduled to do this work on the 15th of August. And but it has indicated that they they potentially might be able to move it up as early as the 6th of August. So.
How long does it take?
So it'll take a a day to do the slurry seal. So it'd be, you know, traffic can, you know, we can maintain traffic, you just just won't be able to park for for an entire day. Then we'll let traffic back on there. And then a week after the slurry seals gets applied, they'll come in and do all the restriping. So the whole thing will be a a week's time, but you know, the the parking prohibition will only last a day. And people will just kind of be able to park in there and they kind of figured it out last.
And the warranty just out, what, late October? One year?
Yeah, I think actually, I think it's actually early November is when we accepted the project. So early November.
Okay, thank you.
I I agree with option number two. I don't think we want a patch job done on Draper Street, but I I I appreciate that Don Berry is willing to come in and and allow afford us this option and and not not try and pave Draper Street. So I I I just, I do appreciate that.
Do you have any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Come on up.
Can you come up to the just to the mic? Because people, yeah, people won't be able to hear you other than.
Life expectancy of chip seal is about five to 10 years. The life expectancy of slurry is five to seven years. The contractor is skipping out. He's putting a Band-Aid on poor workmanship. So the slurry job in the parking stalls is just a Band-Aid. And for him not to take full responsibility, he's not we don't appreciate that he's helping us. He's obligated to fix it by contract. So for anybody to say that a slurry seal is a fix, it's not a fix. It will also deteriorate over time. The chip sale chip seal should last five years minimum. So Don Berry, who seems to be contractor of choice, I I don't think I've ever seen another contractor in Kingsburg have, is there?
Yeah, we have. We have. I think that he he comes up a lot of times because we do a three bid process and then we do it based on fiscal responsibility.
Anyway, so he's obligated to to fix it. If the city pays for the striping, shame on you. He's obligated to fix it and put the striping back on. They're not doing you any favors putting slurry seal on.
Well, so what, as you come up here, what what would you do if you're in our shoes? What would you?
I would have him take the chip seal off of where it's failing, where it's raveling and reapply.
So you would have him take off? What option out of out of one?
Parking stalls, he he grinds out the whole or what they mentioned, but he takes out the slurry seal, the chip seal and rechip seals. And and he's he skips either the subcontractor or or Don Berry skips in November. Rattles again, tough luck, guys. So whether it's it was poor workmanship or lack of cleaning, I'm not sure.
Abby, did you get the name? Thank you. Do you have any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, so then we'll bring it back to council. Do we have any additional council comments, questions?
Yeah, I think to Mr. Berger's point and getting to what Mayor Protem Palomar was stating, it's like even if we go with the option two and then it just unravels again before or after, let's say after the warranty, then where are we at? We're redoing it for a third time, right? I mean, five months down the road. It unravels. I know, I know, I can appreciate that you say, hey, we should know in the next four months. But the next four months are going to be hot and maybe that slurry melds into itself. And then when it gets cold, it contracts and maybe it starts coming up again in October, November. I don't know. I'm not an expert. I'm just saying now we if they would at least give us another one year warranty on what they're gonna do, I probably would feel better about it. But I don't feel real great about spending, you know, 38,000 bucks to Mr. Berger's point for something that really should have been, you know, it should have been slam dunk, but it's not. So here we are.
Yeah, I would say that it's it's not all of the areas. There are a lot of good areas. It's just parts of the areas. So like I said, under the contract, the only obligation we can put on the contractors is to do the areas that are failing and then you end up with a patch.
Okay.
That's why I think this is a better, a better option. And you know, I can, I can tell you that I'm very confident that in four months, we'll know whether this is the final fix or whether it's still an issue. If it's still an issue, we'll put them on notice. We'll send them a letter saying, hey, still got issues, still got problems, you know, and and then that will extend, that will extend the the warranty out.
Other council comments?
I I just have one. So I've been up here approving these contracts for over five years now. And Mr. Berger is absolutely right. Majority of our road related contracts end up going to Mr. Berry. This is the first time since I've been up here that we've had an issue where we had to bring them back. And I am not excusing the work that's out there. It's not up to our standards, plain and simple, especially for Draper. That being said, if this was a different contractor, I would have a bigger burn with this 38,000 for restriping. It it is what it is at this point. And shame on us if the contract doesn't read right. Contract states that he has to patch this. This town with a little bit of extra pride, being from Kingsburg. So I don't have a huge concern putting out the 38,000. I know that we can afford it right now. I'm 100% with Councilmember Silva, but if we have to redo this again, I'm gonna be furious. And if it's not done again, but I think this was a mistake. Whether that was a mistake at the yard where it was mixed, whether it was a mistake the way that it was laid, we don't know. But I feel like he's coming to the table with a reasonable fix. But we are gonna have to pitch in for this. So for me, because it's Berry Construction, because he does so many jobs around town, but I believe we we have saved more than $38,000 over the years with using Berry Construction. I'm not really willing to burn that relationship down to save the 38 grand, personally.
You know, I'll just tell you again, they've been a fantastic partner. They've done, they did, they finished the Laurel Dog Park. You approved that contract tonight. They typically always go above board. I feel like they always do more than what's required by the contract. You know, to make a good, make a project good. So I I would, I would agree with that.
So so for me, I'm okay with the 38,000. I'm not in love with it, but I'm okay with it this time because I feel like he's built up enough equity in the bank with me to approve this this time. But that's just my opinion. So.
One more question. He's not gonna use the same subcontractor, is he?
No, it is the same subcontractor.
It is. Okay. So hopefully it was just something with the mix or the way it was applied or.
Like I said, there's a lot of nuances in this kind of work, but.
Dave, you're pretty confident that we'll know by November. And then, like you said, if if there's an issue, we're gonna put them on.
I feel strongly that option two is gonna resolve.
I look forward to seeing you out there as they're doing it, Dave, just to make sure. I see you out walking.
Question. I I'm I'm not at all sure when school starts, but I'm thinking, has school started by the 15th? I mean, if we could.
Pretty close.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Okay, if we could get it done sooner, I I that would.
Tentatively hoping to do it on the 6th. We just need to give them the the go ahead and hopefully we get that date locked in, but.
The the one benefit, if we can, is that the travel lanes will stay open. So even if they're, even if they're doing the work on the 15th and school school starts for the elementary district on the 14th. So we've we've had that conversation too, but Draper would remain open for school traffic.
Any other questions? If not, it looks like our possible actions are to look at options one or two or any other possible options by council. And I'd say at this point, we'll entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we go with option number two.
Staff recommendation. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
No, opposed. Okay. So we have. So nay. You're good. Okay, so motion carries three to one. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate you. Next on future agenda items, we have none listed. City managers report.
Just briefly, just want to thank the Sea Wolves for their partnership for the July 3 fireworks celebration. We are planning to sit down with them tomorrow morning to go over to do a full debrief, just to kind of walk through well and well and what didn't. But I think, you know, overall, our goal was to make sure that the event went off for the community and you know, put on a good show. So mission, mission accomplished on that front. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a way after at some point in the next couple of council meetings, we can have them show up and we can get a little bit of a brief from them on what they thought with the city partnership also?
Yeah, I'll discuss that tomorrow for sure.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, council member reports and council committee reports with Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. Economic Development Committee has not met, nor has the SKGSA. I did sit in for Councilmember North at last night's chamber board meeting in which a couple key things to note, two board members offered their letter of resignation to step down prior to their term ending. So those resignation letters were accepted. There was at least five members in the audience that were there to to petition for those spots. So they did a secret ballot, the board secret ballot. And so the two new board members that were elected by secret ballot were Stacy Farrell, previously Carcy, and then also Susan Watkins. So those are our two new chamber board members. So it was, it was, it was a good meeting, well attended. And that is, I believe, all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
The Finance Committee hasn't met. We'll be meeting on July 28. Community Services also will be meeting on July 23. I wanted to bring to your attention and I passed out a few flyers. At the task force meeting, this has been brought up. Kathleen Lawler is on the this committee, the Center for Community Transformation at Fresno Pacific. And so they're going to be holding, she's excited about holding this roundtable discussion on August 21st.
Excellent. Mayor Protem?
Public Safety Committee, we are scheduled to meet August 12. Planning Commission, we met last week. We had one agenda item. The Planning Commission approved a partial map to divide a property on 10th Avenue into two parcels. S K F. We also met last week. S K F, we the border, we approved a resolution for sewer system management plan, which is a document that the state requires. So it's just a document we approved. Also, approved an amendment for an agreement for wastewater disposal between the district and lion raisin and sun made raisin. Also, we approved with a consultant agreement, for consultant agreement with Hewitt Engineers for a for the effluent disposal line R and R project. So that's what I have.
Thank you. For me, with council governments, lots and lots and lots of debate and conversation about Measure C. At the last meeting, we, as a council, set up the steering committee and allocated the seats for the steering committee. I was opposed to the allocation of 12 seats to a private group on the committee. I believe opposed to that was myself, Reedley, Salma, and the County of Fresno. There's a group that was taking 12 of currently 24 seats that I was non supportive of. But that that's moving forward with that steering committee as is. Next step in the Measure C committee is they're gonna start doing funding allocations, percentages and stuff. And that's really the most important part as far as we go to see where that money is gonna go. You're talking about, you know, seven to $30 billion worth of money. And it's important to get that right and making sure that we get as much money as we can for our roads, especially in Kingsburg. Our stance on that has been, we are looking to get as much money as we can for road improvements and not dumping a ton of money into transit. Transit within the city of Fresno, transit within the city of Clovis. We want our Kingsburg dollars to stay in Kingsburg. And we want those allocations to be lined out well before the measure comes out for vote. And we want those allocations to be lined out well before the measure comes out for vote. So pay attention to the Measure C stuff as it comes up. There's more and more of that that's gonna be happening. And you're gonna see them, both, both sides coming into town. There is groups that are looking at running alternative measures at this point. So it's gonna, it's gonna get spicy for a little bit. Other than that, last Friday, City Manager Henderson and I met with State of California Treasurer Ma, Fiona Ma. She reached out, she was already in town. So we were fortunate enough to have breakfast with her just to go through some funding options for future capital projects for the city. She's a great resource for us. And it was good to see that our state treasurer vacations in Kingsburg. That's what she was here for. It, I like that, I like that kind of stuff. Her and her husband, they come here every year and spend about a week in Kingsburg. So I love, I love that. Surprise, I love it. So other than that, I had a meeting same day later in the evening with Lorenzo Rios. He is running for United States Congress. He was wanting to know some stuff about Kingsburg, wanting some, wanting an endorsement. And I would expect to see him in and around Kingsburg, trying to get a better feel for who we are as a community before any endorsements or anything were made. So that's all I have for my reports. Do we have anything else from council members, staff, anything? If not, we're going to, we're gonna adjourn the regular calendar and we're gonna go into closed session for a conference. we're going to adjourn the regular calendar, and we're going to go into closed session for a conference.